Calling this meeting to order, can you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So since we, Sarah is absent, Brad, I'm gonna appoint you secretary, but Colleen's gonna take notes.
Okay, perfect.
So you're taking the official notes. So Brad, can you do a roll call?
Sure. Brian Smith?
Here.
Don Porter?
Here.
Dana Wells Jenny?
Here.
Tim Wood?
Here.
Brad Randall here. Five board members present. We have Sarah Jones absent and Jeff Wolfersberger absent today.
Thank you. Are we gonna do the, Stephanie, do you wanna hold the other comments? Are we gonna do comments to the public right now? Or do you wanna?
Yeah, I need to.
Okay. Do you have any comments, Brad?
Yes, we have one. We have Carol Lukowski.
Hold on, comments?
Yes.
Is that what we're getting to?
Yep.
Get these very bad comments.
Yep. That's you. Scared me.
Karen Lukowski, 4:30 in Calister Road in Battle Creek, Penn State president for almost thirty-three years. I understand the budget constraints after almost nineteen years of working in the district and eighteen years as a parent. I expect better for students. I want to express my deep disappointment in the staffing cuts that are being made, not just to nursing services, but across the board in classrooms and other departments. These cuts will gravely affect every student's ability to be present and learn. I want you to understand the specific impacts of decreasing nursing services because nurses provide much more than you may be aware of. Current cost benefit analysis for two FTE nurses shows it costs thirty-eight cents per day per student or less than seventy-five dollars per year, addressing the specific impacts of losing a nurse position. This year, to respond to health needs across the district, a nurse was present three days each week at Purdy, two days each week at Dunlap Middle School and High School buildings, and one day per week at North Penn. A loss of a nurse position will mean that just twenty percent of the days in each building will be covered for students, making it difficult to get everything done while also managing the program. In the past year, one thousand six hundred thirty-seven student health office visits took place. This will be significantly reduced. Case management will also be strained for the four hundred fifty students with reported medical conditions across the district. The loss means office staffs will have even more duties. Without a nurse in the building, they will be dealing with more student injuries and illnesses. Often, students are sent home for minor complaints because a nurse is not there to assess and treat. Therefore, significantly more students will be absent. The office staff will be unable to maintain or improve upon the seventy-eight percent return to class rate of the nurse. The nurse will not be available to leave one building to go to another to assess minor injuries. This does occur frequently. For more serious injuries or illnesses, MERC will need to be activated and a parent and/or EMS called. The nurse will no longer be able to do the required weekly communicable disease report for each building. Office staff will need to. Should an outbreak occur, a nurse can no longer be reassigned to disease intake, as was the case in mid-October through February of this year. So the eight hundred and nineteen intake calls taken then will need to be handled at the building level along with any required reporting. The nurse can no longer take the lead in immunization monitoring and reporting. The two hundred and thirty-nine records reviewed, the one hundred and fifty-five letters sent, the fifty-seven calls to parents made will return fully to the office staffs. Funding appears to be the main issue. Funding streams are available that we are not fully utilizing. One, caring for students, C4S, is reimbursement through Medicaid for general education students. The ISD would need to get it initiated. Kent County has been doing this Medicaid billing for about two years. Federal dollars were made available in 2021 to increase not only mental health resources, but school nurses specifically as part of the American Rescue Plan.
Karen, you're at three minutes. I need you to wrap it up, okay?
I'm wrapping up. Student foundation allowance dollars for special education students who utilize nursing services can also be used. In closing, I want each of you to consider the breadth and depth of the staff cuts in the budget being presented to you, especially at a time when more students need support. Every department, every position has an important role in every student's education. Please vote with the student's best interests in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments from the public, Brad?
No, that is all for tonight.
All right, moving on to three point oh one, twenty-one, twenty-two final budget revisions. Angina and Stephanie?
Good evening. At this time, the budget hearing is really for the twenty-two, twenty-three. That's the mandate that we have to do is to hold a budget hearing prior to the thing, to the regular board meeting. But in the past, and I'd like to ask permission from the board to go ahead and talk about the twenty-one, twenty-two revision along with the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, and we can take care of it all at this meeting.
Yep, absolutely.
All right, so I'm gonna project up on the screen here the documents that you've received previously that you were able to review. This packet of information, it says the twenty-two, twenty-three budget resolution for all the funds, but I'll show you here in a second. I'm just gonna go to the summary pages. So this is the general fund, and this is by far the largest fund that we have in the district. You'll see the two columns we're going to talk about today is this twenty-one, twenty-two revision two. And basically, what that is doing is taking our most recent revised budget, looking at that to see what expenses we're going to incur through June thirtieth, and trying to come as close as we possibly can. In that, I'll preface that with there, when this budget was drafted, there's still about a month of operation going on where expenses are happening. So there is some room in this budget still for things to happen, for maintenance-wise stuff to happen. There's still utilities that will be coming in, stuff with transportation was still going on. So there's still, when we look at the bottom line, this bottom line is still gonna change when we come to audit. We, by far, will be within five percent. I like to tighten it down even more and be within three percent. And there's one part, one caveat in here, when we get to the capital outlay projects, we have a UNIVET system project going on at the two elementary buildings. Those dates for the equipment to come in has been pushed back to September now. So while they are still doing some work at those elementaries, getting what they can do without having the actual UNIVET and without removing what we actually have, so once school starts and if it's delayed even more, we would continue to have heat and so on and so forth. So there is money budgeted in there, probably higher than what will be used through June thirtieth. So that'll be a change, and when we bring the audit back and talk about that, we'll talk about that again, and just so I can kind of remind you, but just so you know, a little bit different this year than what's happened in the past. I'm gonna just jump down to the bottom. I'd like to start at the bottom first. And this budget shows you that we are bringing in the final revision, a seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollar deficit. You'll note that the previous revision that we took was a one point four million dollar deficit. So we've about cut that in half. Again, like I just noted, that will be better, most likely. I'm like ninety-nine point nine percent sure that that will be better when we get through audit and really close out the year. Some of the main changes in that is if, on the breakdown, like on the revenue side, the revenue you'll see is decreased by one point one million. And that, in fact, is from the ESTER three grant. It was fully budgeted in the first revision, and now it's been adjusted to what's just gonna happen through June thirtieth. And that grant really takes us, can be used out to 2024. So at the planning time, we are still planning. We are still kind of seeing what was gonna happen. So that's why it was all put in the budget, and then as we've planned, as we've put the plan out and have budgeted for that, that's where we've, can change that. And a lot of that also is for that UNIVET project, which was definitely a moving target date on there. Once we get into the expenses, you'll see that there's ups and downs throughout different categories. Throughout the basic instruct, basic programs under the instruction category, that category is all the teaching instruction. And that, like, elementary was down like forty-eight thousand. We had a teacher leave before the end of the year, so that was that savings. We also had some at the high school, which again, we had an open position for a few months before we had that filled. We also had some dual enrollment fees that were reduced from what we've had in the past. We've had in the one-two sections, the added needs, that's the specialized program that runs. You'll see there's an increase in that section, and that was due to some retirees, some sick leave, and some sub-costs for teachers doing some subbing needed in the classrooms. Also, in the two-one sections is your counselors, your noon hour staff. Again, we had some added for some extra days, some staffing changes with some aides. So that's kind of where the movement up and down in that area. In the two-two section is mainly technology. And that, that change is due to we reallocated for account numbers. So there is some change in how tech expenses are to be expensed out. Some are to be expensed out in the buildings now, some are to be expensed out in another function code, which is two-eight-four. So it really is just reallocating those across to correct function codes throughout the budget. When we get to the two-three section, which is the administration, that is due to professional development and professional services that we've had. The two-four section is the building administration. And the change in that is due to PD supplies that we didn't, you end up using this year, bringing that down. Also dental and vision reimbursement, that's on a reimbursement plan for the district. So that kind of can up and flows depending on what the needs are of the staff at that time. So that's just bringing that back to June thirty, what projected is to be through June thirtieth.
Angina?
Yes.
Just so I'm looking at this correctly, like when we're talking about two-three under general administration, do you see that, and I think I'm looking at this right, like the preliminary budget number was around, was almost exactly a half million, four ninety-nine, four? Is that correct?
No. It was the.
Four twenty-two, forty-nine. This is the initial proposed budget. This was the revision in December.
Yep, so that's revision one.
Last spring before June thirtieth, before going, maybe everything. And then this was.
The five twenty-four was revision one, right?
Yep, and now five eighteen is where we're coming in final. And this is, this column is what we're proposing for next year.
Now I get it. That's helpful. Cause I'm look, I don't know why, the one I've got, that I got by email doesn't have the first column, which was.
It's been updated in board doc. You're right, you received one for, and then in board docs it's been updated, so I apologize for.
Oh, I'm not mad. I just was trying to follow you.
Yep.
Okay.
In this, this first column, yep, you're in second way, you crossed, thank you.
Okay.
This, all right, so we're gonna leave out the two fours, right?
Yeah, you're headed into two fours now.
And also there was graduation expense previously when we did the, what we'll call COVID graduations, when they were outside and we had staged it and all this stuff. That cost us more funds than it did this year, so there was a savings in that area. Going to the two-five section, that's business services. You'll see there was one increase in there of about fifty thousand, and that was due to taxes that were owed back to the city and township, and that's like a shift. So with that, we are made whole with that through revenue from the state or, and/or from the county in the settlements. So I have to show it on the expense side, but it also flips onto the revenue side to, to make us whole for that. Moving to the two-sixes, that's our maintenance and grounds section. And you'll see a large decrease in that area. And what we did, there were some changes to, with some of the grant funds and how that was moved, also bringing supplies and utilities in line for the end of the year. That's one that's hard to predict with what the temperature's gonna be, what the heating's gonna be, items like that. So those are areas that usually have a large, that and the two-sevens have a large variance at the end of the year. Moving to the two-sevens.
Are we gonna do, excuse me, I'm sorry, are we gonna do questions at the end?
Sure.
Or do you want us to stop along the way?
Either way, whatever. If you have a question, that's fine.
I just seen a significant increase for that for next year.
Yes, so for next year.
So currently, we're able to charge off some of our custodial services to ESTER funds, and so next year, those will all be put back into general fund dollars. So, and on top of it, there's also three percent in compensation increases for staff calculated in there as well. So it's about a seventy thousand dollar difference.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the two-sevens, as I said too, that's transportation, and that's also one of the sections that has quite a bit of variance. That's due to fuel, that's due to having money allocated if a bus is to break down, what parts are needed, and items like that. So that category generally is a variance like that. Moving to the two-eighties again, that's where I talked about those tech expenses. And a lot of those were allocated to there. It's just a different function code, moving it from that two-twenty-five over that to that two, two-eight-four. And then the two-nines is athletics. And we had a small decrease there, but we had a coach position that wasn't filled this spring. And then it's just bringing the supplies and stuff in line of what will be spent through June thirtieth. The four thousands is the capital outlay. And that's that one that I talked about earlier where I had dollars in there for the project that's running right now. So depending on, I wasn't really sure how much work they were actually gonna get done in June, what they'll be billing out for that. So that's why that's beefed up there so that we can cover the June expenses. And then whatever isn't spent there, we'll just roll over to, to next year. So that, that one can have quite a variance when we come into the year end. Grant funds, just a reminder, the expenses and revenues equal, and then the grants were, again, were gone through to bring them up to what would be expensed through June thirtieth. So that, that's rundown of that, of the second revision for general fund.
And I misspoke when I said it's like a hundred and sixty thousand dollar variance in the, from this year to next year in that maintenance category.
The other thing, Brian, I wanted to explain, that first column is actually the actual of last year. That's what we ended the actual, then it showed, you should see revision one, revision two, and then the preliminary.
Yeah, I found it in the board docs after you told me that.
Yep.
I just needed to ignore that email one.
Yep.
I did. So are you ready for a question?
Sure.
You mentioned you felt pretty certain that these numbers will actually improve in the coming weeks. Do you expect that to be as a result of rev, increased revenue or decreased expense?
Decreased expense.
And do you have any idea yet why, where, you must have an idea of why you think that's gonna happen.
One is going to be in the ads, that cap, capital projects for the ESTER, the ESTER work that's going on at the elementary buildings, because they started, but I don't know how much that they're going to get done between now and June thirtieth. So there's a good amount there. There's also amount left in maintenance. Cause like I said, this budget was drafted probably a week and a half ago. I think we probably finalized it. And with that being the month of June, there's still, I mean, we could have a chiller go out, right? We could have, you know, something maintenance that has to be fixed or taken care of. Plus, our maintenance guys and grounds crew are still, are starting to do their summer work and work through the buildings and stuff like that. So there are still funds available in there for that. Same with transportation. We're still running a few buses for special ed, so I've left money in there for, if there's issues with that. But through and through, it's, when you do these budgets, and what's required by law is that in these categories, that we're not allowed to overspend in those categories. So I leave a little bit of room in there so that if something does come in that, you know, like, oh, now I'm gonna turn in this reimbursement that I wasn't aware, you know, we have to look at that and stuff. So there's a little bit of, you know, window room in there for me. I tried to bring it down real close, but I still leave enough that hopefully the, the goal is to not go over that budget in those line items.
Okay. Thank you, Angina.
Okay, any other questions? Or I'm gonna move to twenty-two, twenty-three. So the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, I'm gonna go over kind of what we use to build this budget. What the board members that have been here previously know that it's kind of, it's a little big estimate here. We don't have a budget from the state yet. We've been in many of meetings. I think Stephanie's talked to superintendents. I'm in business manager, finance director meetings. And it's all across the board what people are doing. It's pretty much a guess, our best guess to what we're going to receive from the state. But we, what we've decided is we budgeted five hundred dollar per FTE foundation increase, which would take our foundation allowance to ninety-two hundred per FTE. We've used the FTE of one thousand nine hundred and ninety-one point six seven FTE. That's how we're paid on the student base. That's taking our fall 2021 count at ninety percent and our spring 2022 count at ten percent. So our spring count is, that, that ten percent is what we're gonna be paid on. The fall count is the ones that will change potentially. And we definitely hope for the better as we're down about two hundred students from this past year. So we're definitely hoping for, to gain some of them back. We also have budgeted a three percent salary increase district-wide. Plus with the teachers, they receive steps plus their three percent when the contract was negotiated. With that, benefits were also updated for that, including the insurance cap, which was, which will be increased January first, but we already have those rates out. So I was able to increase for that also. Now, the not-so-fun part about building this budget and to make it, let me get to the bottom here. We're actually bringing you a balanced budget this year, which takes an awful lot of work and a lot of consideration and not fun choices, not popular choices. But there's just a lot of unknowns. We've taken a deficit budget for a couple of years now. And we just need to, to, so we can't continue to do that or that will eat up our fund balance very quickly. We have reduced staff by eleven point six three FTE. So most of that is through attrition. We've had people retire and, or leave the district that we have found ways that we don't have to post all those positions and replace those positions. And a few of them, we had to make the tough decisions to reduce the, reduce the position. We've also reduced supplies across the district, and pretty much everybody has felt that. Teaching, tech, maintenance, all across the board have had some reduction in the amount of supplies and/or services that we're going to be able to purchase. We have also, some of the expenses, we talked about the vans previously, right? So one van, fingers crossed, is gonna make it by June thirtieth, but fingers crossed. It's, it's been made. It was in Kansas City. It's on its way to Michigan. It just depends if we are going to get it before June thirtieth or not. So we know one is in the horizon, very close. The other two, not so much. The other two have not made it to production, last I've heard. So that expense has been rolled over to the twenty-two, twenty-three. So we're still working it. We're still planning. They're still ordered. We're just waiting for, for production for those. And then, of course, that UNIVET project that will now be rolling over and happening. And I think probably in December, we're gonna give air conditioning to the buildings for Christmas.
So I mean, you're accruing for those, you're, you're just accruing for those things, right?
Yes, so I'm just, I'm budgeting for them, right?
Yeah, and if, and if those don't happen by June thirty, you roll the accrual over into the new budget, right? Okay.
So one other thing is that throughout the process of balancing the budget, we also did apply zero-based budgeting to make sure that we were accounting for things based on priority and need. And the biggest priority and need was having funds available to make the purchase of a K-8 math and reading curriculum for our teachers so that they have access to the tools they need to teach. And we're still waiting on those quotes to come in for what the cost, the exact cost of that will be.
So with that, as I said, we are bringing you a zero, a balanced budget. So we are stating that we will not be increasing or decreasing to the fund balance. That would leave us with a fund balance of six point two million and twenty-four point seven five percent. And one thing I'd like to point out, however, all of that six million is not available to use. Like some of, like the UNIVET, right, that's out of there. That's already earmarked out of there. The vans are already earmarked out of there. So of the unallocated or unassigned, it's four million dollars that we have available, which is sixteen percent of our total expenses.
So for things like curriculum that you're, get, waiting a. So for things like curriculum that you're getting, waiting a quote on right now, do we have like, when you try to, because you're trying to budget neutral here. You're trying to. Um, so do you have forecasted in this, like some idea of what we think, that kind of thing? Or is there no way to do that?
I wish that I could, but I really have no idea.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I've spoken to a couple of superintendents that have gone with other, um, curricular tools. But really it all depends on the publisher, how that it works. So it's not like you can go get ten quotes on the same curriculum. You, you're at the mercy of the publisher. So as soon as we have that, we'll be ready to go. My guess is it'll be about a million dollars.
Okay. Then when you, not to dive, I mean, once you choose a curriculum, right, how long is a curriculum good for?
Um, I think that, you know, you're looking at a ten-year investment.
Okay.
On that topic, is that something that is, uh, digital and hard copy? Both?
Yep.
Okay.
Is there any other questions regarding the general fund budget? I have three more, but they're very quick. These one, the general fund is by far, has the most detail, the most funds that, that we use there.
Is there a, in an ideal world, is there a recommendation from anyone that influences, like, what is it? What percentage of revenue or a, pardon me, a budget do they, is it said we should keep on hand for a general fund by a balance? Is there a, uh, best practice?
There, so in the past, in the previous board, we liked to earmark like a seventeen percent unassigned fund balance. But somewhere between like fifteen, seventeen percent. But what that allows you to do is, um, not have to borrow over the summer for payroll.
Yeah.
So a lot of school districts, it's kind of funny. So we're funded primarily through the state, right? Their fiscal year runs October first through September thirtieth, which is way different than ours. So by the time they finalize a budget, get it moving, we get our first state aid payment in, um, September. It's, we're, I mean, or October, we're already, uh, you know, a quarter into the school year. And a lot of times, the front end of the school year is where we spend a lot of our money, getting things ready, getting supplies. You know, if it's textbooks, you know, whatever that, that may be. So there's a lot of districts that have to borrow money to, to cover their payroll through, through that time.
Yeah.
So having that seventeen percent, fifteen to seventeen percent allows us to not have to borrow funds and we can cover our own payroll.
Thank you. Okay.
And then I'll just say, if you get to five percent, the state starts coming in and they start, um, asking a lot of questions, looking very deep into your stuff, starting to, you know, help you manage. And then of course, if you go below, you know, zero, if you have a deficit, then we just never want to even talk about that, right? We don't even want to go down that path, but it's really not good, so. I'm going to move, um, this is to the, um, student services. So this is the activity accounts. These are basically all the fundraising accounts that happen. So the revenue and expenditures, um, well, I say they equal, in this budget, it doesn't show that they equal, but we cannot spend any more than the, than the money that we have on hand with that. So this is all student counts or club accounts and stuff like that. So you'll see as we put here, they're starting with two hundred thousand dollars in fund balance. I'm projecting a hundred and forty thousand dollar, um, revenue bring in. So that's as they fundraise, that's what, that's what that revenue is based on. So kind of looking back to some past history on what they fundraised, that's what that's built on. And then also the expenses going now. So as they fundraise, then they'll also do, um, activity. They'll do like field trips or they'll, you know, do like special projects. Um, athletics, um, teams have their fundraising cut work, which they can buy, like maybe extra, like warm-up uniforms might be. It's just an example, but some different things allows them some availability to do some of that stuff that the general fund budget just won't allow for. So you'll see in that, um, third column, that's the revision that I'm bringing to you. And then the highlighted column is the budget for twenty-two, twenty-three. Any questions with that? All right. And then the next one that we'll talk about is our scholarship fund. And that again, that's one that, uh, the only amount that can be spent is the amount of money that we have, um, that we've received for that. The majority of that revenue comes from, uh, for jean scholarships. And that comes from staff being able to wear jeans on Fridays. Everybody, um, contributes to that. Um, well, everybody that wants to participate contributes to that. So that's mainly where the revenue comes in. And then we offer out, um, thousand dollar jean scholarships to student, to seniors at the end of the year. So that's basically the expense. There are a few other small scholarships that, um, family members have contributed to over the years. It might be like a five hundred dollar scholarship or something like that, but the majority is the jean scholarship. So again, the, uh, third, the third column is the revised budget. The highlighted one is the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, um, that I'm asking to be approved tonight. Any questions? All right. And moving to our final one is the food service fund. So our food service fund is very healthy. It's been healthy for many years. Um, the, again, I'm bringing to you the revision and the preliminary. That's based on the amount that we received. There's a couple of different, this year, everybody had free, um, received free breakfast and lunch. So that's mainly from the state reimbursement that we received that. Now there is some local revenue that would be like for students that are purchasing extras and à la carte stuff. So that was still an option. So there is a little bit of funds that come in from, from that way. We receive a little bit from state aid. Um, but the majority is that federal revenue, which is the reimbursement for the meals themselves that we receive. Moving to, um, next year, we will have K eight. We'll be eating breakfast and lunch for free. And our high school will go back to full pay. And that, the reason for that is, um, this year, the, the free throughout the course of the whole district, that is still part of the, as Sir will say, the COVID money, the, the programs that they're running for that purpose. But going back, we're going back to the, um, previous rules and laws that need it to qualify. And right now, our high school doesn't qualify based on the number of free and reduced, um, applications and students that we have. So that's, that's the only reason that we're going back to the high school paying for lunches next year. Um, with the expense side of things, that, um, two-one section, that's noon supervisors. So part of our noon supervising staff can be charged off to our food service department. The part, when they're in the building, in the cafeteria, they allow us to use food service funds for that, is, um, that portion. And then the two-nine-seven is the food service, um, that's all the expenses. That's their expenses. That's the food. That's all the cost for running, for running the program. You'll see that transfer out, um, amount in that's for the indirect costs coming back into the general fund. And that's basically to cover, um, like all the business services, the payrolls, uh, the processing, Stephanie, uh, utilities, stuff like that that goes on in the school. That fund is allowed to pay back the district for some of that. Um, you'll see this year, uh, we're looking at a twenty thousand dollar deficit, which, uh, we really need that to be quite larger because, um, with the food service fund, you're allowed to only carry three months of operating expenditures. And so what they, what they call that, when you're over that, you have to be on a spend down plan. So we currently are on a spend down plan and we've put out where, um, some things we're purchasing and replacing some freezers. We've done some hood, um, units over their stoves. And we have a list of, of things that, um, we've talked some with about and some we're still working on getting the actual pricing and that will be coming to you, uh, depending on the, the dollar amount and stuff like that. But we definitely looking, um, at the twenty-two, twenty-three, you'll see I budgeted that two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollar deficit. That's the amount that we need to spend down for, uh, next year to get us in line with the amount of fund balance that we can carry over in that fund. And that too, the twenty-two, twenty-three, that was, um, their salary and benefits were updated to, um, include, um, steps that they have plus a three percent increase plus with the benefits in that. Any questions regarding the food service? And the last thing that I have for you to approve that you'll see in the board, um, under the consent agenda, when we get to the regular board meeting, is the L forty-two-nine, which is the tax rate request. So that's something that also is done annually. There's no changes to what has happened before. It'll be eighteen mills operating and ten point six for debt. So that's just an annual, um, renewal that needs to be approved at the board level. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Sorry, went over a little bit there.
All right. Uh, moving on, four point oh one, comments from the board. Good?
I just want to tell both of you, thank you very much for your hard work on that.
All right. At six forty-one, we're adjourning the budget hearing, meeting. I'm making motion to adjourn. Six forty-one. Okay. All right.
Calling the next meeting.
All right. Uh, I'm going to call this next meeting to order at six forty-two. If you can please rise for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Brad, could you do a roll call?
Yes, I can. Tim? Amy Wells Jenny?
Here.
Ryan Smith?
Here.
Tom Thornton?
Here.
Brad Crandall?
Here.
Sarah Jones, not here. And John Pultersberger, not here.
Three point oh one, comments from the public. Do you have any comments? All right. Moving on, three point, uh, three point oh one superintendent report.
Yes. Um, just a couple of things to share with you. And I will keep it short so that we can get to the, um, the cake. And all of these awesome retirees that came and you're, we're running behind. I'm sorry. Um, so just a few things to update you on. Um, first of all, uh, wanted to tell you a little bit about where we're at with staffing. Um, we, uh, held high school principal interviews today. Uh, middle school assistant principals were held last week and we have second round of interviews, um, on Wednesday. Um, we've interviewed for a transportation supervisor position and recently received resignation from our principal at Purdy. So her and her husband will be moving, um, up north for a superintendency there. Um, we currently have several athletic coaching positions available. We have bowling, um, eighth grade girls and boys, uh, basketball. We also have freshman girls' basketball, JV volleyball for girls, um, varsity assistant football coach, wrestling coach, and eighth grade volleyball coach, also a freshman football coach and middle school track. So we need a lot of, um, awesome coaches. Um, we also have a posting at Dunlap for an instructional coach slash interventionist, um, to help support the implementation of the new curriculum we'll be receiving. Also a high school math teacher posting and a language arts teacher at the middle school. Um, Dunlap also has a secretary position that's open. Um, we're hiring noon supervisors, food service, bus drivers, subs, um, a technology technician, as well as a teacher for an intensive resource room for special education. So, um, it's summer break, but we're going to be quite busy with, um, conducting interviews, hiring, onboarding and training new staff to be ready for school to start. Um, of the layoffs that I did have to make, I was able to offer, um, employees a different option for placement within the district. And some of them, um, did take advantage of that and some, um, are not going to take advantage of that. Um, but ultimately, um, you know, doing our best to retain our, our staff that we have currently and bring in new staff. Um, I'll be sending out communication about, um, a couple of, uh, transfers that are going to take place for, um, employees that were offered in a, a different position that have accepted that. Um, and that'll be going out tonight to the board and to our staff. Um, and so are there any questions about staffing? Okay. And so the other thing that I wanted to, um, highlight is that, um, we've been working on the student code of conduct. Um, as you know, you approved the hiring of April Yates as our director of communications and innovation. Um, April, if he wasn't here, we did that at, um, my evaluation. Um, and April agreed to come on early. Uh, her contract was for July one. She came on early to help with, um, getting these things underway. And our, um, student code of conduct, um, across the district are very different from one another. So, um, trying to make sure that we are in alignment with, um, the law and what needs to be in one of those has, um, been a, a big undertaking. So we'll be coming to the policy committee in July as well as to the board with, uh, newly updated legal, um, student code of conduct for all of our buildings. Um, and finally, our curriculum committees, we had established a reading curriculum committee as well as a, um, math curriculum committee that had representation of teachers and administrators. Um, they, the teams did amazing work to fully vet several different, um, curricular tools and do research on, um, how those work in different places and, um, came with a recommendation for adopting, uh, K eight math and reading curriculum. And so we're just waiting on getting that information back on the cost so that we can move forward with making that purchase and getting our teachers the tools that they need. Um, the students, the resources that they need as well. And with that will come a lot more work in the area of planning for professional development and support of our teachers. Any questions on that? The last thing that I would just say is there's a lot of hype right now in Lansing about what's going to happen with the, the school aid fund. Um, it's quite frustrating to be a superintendent, I think, or business manager at this time. Um, we kind of, as school districts get, you know, tugged around and jerked back and forth and don't really have good answers about what will happen. Um, I would encourage anybody, um, that feels so inclined to contact their legislator and tell them that they need to be lobbying to get the budget approved and not to shortchange our students. Um, and so there's, I've talked with a lot of superintendents about their approach to budgeting and, um, everybody's kind of all over the place. And so we're fortunate that, um, we, um, are taking care of our financial health uh, for the district a, as it stands now so that if in fact, the, the budget were to come in worse from the state than what we budgeted for, we would be sitting in a, in a fiscally responsible position. That's all I have for my update.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, uh, four point oh one through four point oh eight. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Scored.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes, five zero. Five point oh one, um, items removed from consent agenda. Didn't have anything. So moving on to six point oh one, uh, retirement recognition.
All right. Dana.
And can you do any of this? I'm sorry. Did? Oh, you have that mic right there.
I have this one. Can you still hear if I stand up or do I just need to move it?
No, I think she'll be.
Okay.
She'll be back.
Can you hear me? Okay. All right. Tonight we are honoring those employees that are retiring and just thanking you for your years of service. So the first person I would like to say thank you and congratulation is Steve Reins.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Our second retiree that we are honoring tonight is Mr. Mike McGuire.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Our next retiree that we are honoring tonight is Mrs. Teresa White.
Thank you so much.
Our next retiree that we are honoring tonight is Mrs. Teresa White.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Our next retiree that we are honoring tonight is Mrs. Teresa White.
Thank you so much.
Our next retiree that we are honoring is Mrs. Carol McQuay.
Thank you so much.
The next retiree that we have tonight, we haven't had an opportunity to say anything kind and nice about her yet at a board meeting, so I want to take this opportunity to thank Tam McGinnity for all of her hard work and dedication to our tech department throughout the years. And last but certainly not least, again, I want to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Jerry Mueller for all his hard work and dedication to Penfield Schools. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you. And there's cake. We have cake. We have cake. Cakes for everybody.
Oh, yep. We do have some additional retirees that I just want to take a moment to recognize who couldn't be here tonight. From 2019, we had Barbara Jinks. From 2020, Patrice Ott. From 2021, Gwendolyn...
Bartson.
Bartson, thank you. From 2021, Abby Green. From 2021, Tom Faber. From 2021, Connie Carroll. From 2021, Jeff Berg. From 2021, Lorraine Bays. From 2021, Sharon Driscoll. And for 2021, Tracy Sager. And also who couldn't, could be here tonight was, from 2022, John Corcoran. So.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Could we recess?
We can recess for, take a...
For a cake break?
Yeah. At 6:54, I motion, we take a recess for some cake. So everyone, let's get some cake.
All right.
Brian, how's your chance for cake?
Oh, okay.
Oh, thank you so much.
Okay, so I can use no problem.
You too, take care.
Mr. Wood, Mr. Smith?
Oh, Lord have mercy.
They're not listening down.
Can I say boys? Boys!
It's gonna be on her head next.
Brian Hawaii.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
All right, it's 7:16 and I'm calling this meeting back to order. So, we are at 6.02, Student Body Representative Report, Ms. Natalie.
Hi, everyone, so, not a lot has happened since school got out, but NHS has a volunteer week coming up, where we will spend a week going to different places and volunteering to help them out. We also have a lot of sports teams that have camps coming up for kids K through 8, so definitely be on the lookout for those.
Thank you Natalie. 6.03, Policy Committee Update, the Chair of that committee is Ms. Donford.
We had a Policy Committee meeting, it was held on Monday, June 13th at 4:00 PM in the Administration Conference Room. Ms. Lerner, Dana Wells Jenny, Tim Wood, and myself were in attendance. We covered 10 different policies and information on those can be found in Board Desks.
Thank you so much. 6.04, Construction Facility Committee Updates. Fortunately, the Chair could not be at the meeting, so Stephanie's gonna give the update.
Let me take one and pass it down. So, what you have in front of you is a big part of what we discussed at the Construction and Facilities Committee, which we held on the 13th of June as well, and we had Tim Wood and Brad Crandall, and Dana also sat in on that meeting since Brian couldn't make it, and we met in the Administrative Conference Room. One of the things that we're trying to move forward with is finalizing a design for the new athletic stadium, and the track and the grandstands are pretty self-explanatory in terms of putting in a seven-lane track. We're looking at the concession building, having a shared concession stand with bathrooms that will help with containing the cost and the ongoing maintenance rather than having two separate buildings. You'll notice that in the proposed drawing that the existing toilet buildings will remain there as well as the new ones that we would be putting in, and that's because of code. And there's some pretty crazy requirements for how many bathrooms you have per, like, people in the stadium, and it's all based on your seating capacity. So, part of what we have to do too is they include the bathrooms in Dunlap as part of the count for having enough toilets for the stadium. And so, yeah, it's kind of an interesting thing to learn. But you'll notice that the bathroom portion there in the drawing includes a men's bathroom, a women's bathroom, a family restroom, and then on the opposite end of the concession stand, there's, we'd be moving the equipment from the existing concession stand over to the new concession stand, the sinks, the coolers and freezers, and be putting in new, new cabinetry around it. You'll notice in the top left, the view to the concessions, it's a 3D drawing there. So, a lot of concession stands have like a pull-down window, and the design of this currently has it set up so that it's doors that open completely. So, it's actually the face of the concession stand, you're looking at the cupboards on the outside, so a pretty interesting concept. The entry, you can see in the bottom, the view to the stadium entrance in the bottom-left corner. One of the things that, this is a preliminary drawing, but one of the things that we want to do is be able to really mark up our emblem there, make that entrance grand for Penn Field, so that's there. We went out to bid for the gym floor at Dunlap, which will be going in in the fall, and while the weather is nice, it'll be a minor disruption to our gym class, but the floor there is really necessary and needs to be fixed right away. So, as soon as we can get that done, that will be done. We've also gone out to bid for boilers at both Purdy and North Penn because those need to be replaced as soon as possible as well. And so, that will be all getting taken care of here on the next week. The final thing is that all of the design packages that we're working on, we really need to focus on getting them out to bid by the end of August so that we can get contracts locked in for next summer. And we see what's happened even with just our HVAC projects at Purdy and North Penn, the supply chain issues, you know, now it's, we all kind of know that they exist and the lead time on many things is taking a lot longer than, you know, we would have hoped. So, the purpose of getting everything out to bid in August is for the purposes of getting our materials at the lowest cost as possible and then also finding the contractors and locking them in ahead of time. So, if there's any input that you'd like to provide on the design of the athletic stadium, please do not hesitate to let me know.
Thank you very much. 6.05, District Branding, Ms. April.
All right, hello, well, thank you for having me here. I have to say, it's been, perhaps I think we are coming on week three, and I am so excited to be a part of Penn Field Schools. There's an amazing community here and even more incredible people. And it's been fun, I'm diving in with both feet and starting to learn, you know, we started looking at student photo conduct, and then also looking at district branding. And this is kind of the fun stuff, it's the visuals that catch people's attention. It tells them who we are as a district and what we do for kids. So, I'm excited today to have the opportunity to talk to you a little bit about district branding and what I've found in the first few weeks that I've been here. So, when we talk about branding, we really talk about being knowledgeable, likable, and trustful, right? There are common brands that we might look at that right away you say, hey, you know, I trust Kellogg's Cereal, or I trust, you know, Geico. There are all these different associations that we have with brands. And it's the same thing when we come to schools, right? You might say, hey, that's, you know, Sony's logo, that's a really good school. We know them, you know them by the colors, you know them by the associations. And so, we want to make sure with brand recognition that we're being really clear and consistent and that our brand represents everything that Penn Field is and that Penn Field will continue to grow into. So, when you start looking at a brand, particularly for a school, there are three things that I'm gonna talk to you about today in particular that we really want to align. So, kind of our brand promise, so what are our values? What sets us apart, and what are we committed to providing for our community? We want to talk about a positioning statement, so what's our why in two to six words? That quick hitter that people can grab onto and say, that's Penn Field. And then also, this is what you normally think of with district branding, but our visual identity, right? So, what colors are we using, what logos are we using, what fonts are we using? How are we making sure that it's a cohesive run that looks professional and catches people's eye, right? We really want to make sure that we're communicating with all of these different pieces for branding, everything that Penn Field is. So, if we jump right into a brand promise, this can sometimes get confused with a mission statement. So, a mission statement is more internally driven. So, it's how is an organization going to work together to accomplish their vision? A brand promise is more externally driven. So, it really is that quick, what are we promising to our stakeholders? So, an example, so Geico's mission is to provide affordable and dependable direct auto insurance to drivers across the United States while also representing our customers in their time of need following an accident. That's their mission statement. In contrast, their brand promise is 15 minutes or less, you can say 15% or more on car insurance. So, it's that quick grab that you know exactly what they're promising to their customers. So, Penn Field, we have a solid mission statement, but looking at what we could develop as a brand promise, what do we want to make sure that our community and our stakeholders know, could be a very powerful next piece in our branding. And then positioning statement. So, a positioning statement is that short memorable phrase, like I said, no more than two to six words, and it's a quick hitter, it's what's gonna get you that attention, it's gonna need to be memorable. So, if we stick with that Geico example, Geico's is real service, real savings. So, it's not quite as deep, it doesn't dig quite as deep into the why, but it's quick, it's catchy, it allows people to remember you. So, right now, we've got PennTastic, which is used as our hashtag, and then we've also got Learn Grow Leads, so we've got two different ones. But what we'll want to do is once we develop and really dig into what the brand promises, we're going to want to make sure that aligns with our positioning statement.
April, is there any way you can move your microphone a smidgen closer to your mouth?
Is this better?
Yeah, I just gotta, some people aren't hearing you through the livestream.
Perfect, thank you for letting me know, I appreciate it. Okay, so, third, and this is kind of where we get to the fun stuff, right? Visual identity, this is what you really think of when you think of brand, you know, your logo, your colors, your typography, all those different pieces really come together and create that consistency so that stakeholders know what you represent. And we want to associate those things with Penn Field. So, what's really neat is that I came into Penn Field and I did a quick logo audit, and there are lots of different logos, which tells me, A, there's a lot of people that are passionate about Penn Field, and B, we've had a lot of creative individuals put some of these different logos together, including students. And I've gotten the chance to learn a little bit about the background of some of these, but you can see there's a variety from more of this circular logo, and you can see just even some variations within that, from shading to flipping the logo on its side. And then you can see there are other ones, and these are just some of the Panther logos. So, you can see, we've got a wide variety of those Panther logos. And then, in addition, we've got a variety of other logos, including some key logos, some paw prints, some circular logos, and then some additional pieces. What's interesting also about the logos is that what I did was go in and pull out colors. So, this is a very fascinating piece. So, I pulled color audits, did a color audit for all of those different logos, and you can see there's a variety of different greens that are being used in the logos, so it's not consistent. The most consistent use that we saw was forest green. I had that in there about four or five times that pulled up. Lincoln green came in two or three, and the rest just came in once or twice. So, you can see we've got a wide variety in the colors that are being used to represent Penn Field in addition to the different logos. One thing that was really interesting, I got to learn a little bit of history about where the yellow came from. So, we do have yellow that's used as an accent in some different places around the district, whether that be some uniforms, some of the different logos. Sounds like that came from Packers emblem when they were designing football uniforms originally. So, that's an interesting piece, we'll want to consider if we're using that as an accent and moving forward. And then, of course, we've got some additional colors, including your general black, your white, and then some different variations of gray. And then, similarly, with typography, we see many different fonts that are being used across the district, and I just pulled some examples from some of the logos. Typically, what I've seen is what's called a serif font, which would be like your Times New Roman, if you think where they have the lines at the ends of the letters. There are some examples like here where there is more of a script font, or in some instances, we have a sans serif, which is without those lines. So, if you think of the sans, that just makes it easy. One thing that's really nice is that we have some opportunity to make some decisions moving forward in order to clarify our brand recognition. So, what's really important is that we have clarity and consistency with those three different pieces that I talked about, so your brand promise, your positioning statement, and also your visual identity. So, what we'd love to do, moving forward, is to consider building a style guide. And a brand style guide, what that would give us is kind of a consistent usage and purpose for what logos are approved by the district, what colors are approved by the district, when they can and cannot be used, what typeface should be used. And that would just give us some professionalism and some additional structure to how these different pieces, how all these different pieces fit in. The end goal of that is that as we release our brand and our style out into the community, it would become easily recognizable, and we can begin to associate some really positive things with Penn Field because there is a lot of amazing things going on. And so, we can start associ- and we can begin to associate some really positive things with Penn Field because there's a lot of amazing things going on, and so we can start associating those. So, here's our ask, a few things. We're asking that we pause new uses of logos, colors, and typography until we develop that brand style guide. So, we don't want to spend a bunch of money printing and developing additional materials until we've got that brand style guide set. We'd like to have a Board of Education work session on July 18th to kind of go through a little more in-depth some of these brand components. And based on that, we'll then develop the brand style guide with approval from, or with feedback from the board. So. Any questions?
No, I think it's absolutely great, I absolutely like, like, this is like a dream come true for me. Because I think brands are very important, and I was, I was actually talking, when you said Kellogg's, I was talking to Dawn today and a little bit about this, and I said, when you see the K, if it was in orange, you would not realize it was Kellogg's because you recognize the K and you recognize the red and it's, you know it's Kellogg's. So, I think that we have, you know, I think it'll just, you know, like you said, it will just add so much value to our district and who we are.
Just in terms of like, big picture too, is I never realized how many different, like, purchases and things are being made to do things. Everything like from student stickers for their cars to passes to, you know, initially, I was just thinking of like shirts and things like that, but it's like, we've got emblems and logos floating on, and a lot of different logos and emblems that are floating on lots of different things. So, I think it'd be really exciting to like, commit to our brand as Penn Field.
I agree.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, April.
Moving on to 6.06, Penn Field School Goals Reporting, K-8, Mr. Jerry.
Fifteen years ago, I didn't need to do this. So, hopefully you have access to the report that I'm going to reference today. And it is going to be a quick presentation and to allow you some time for questions if you would like. When we began coming back to school after virtual learning and extended learning because of COVID, one of the requirements was that during the 21-22 school year, we had to do an extended COVID-19 learning plan. And actually, some of the work that Angina was doing with SOR3 monies required that we reposted that plan. So, if you go to our website, you'll see a plan there that says we've returned to school, that's our plan. So, it, this is a little bit about compliance, but a lot about celebration tonight. So, as we take a look at this, you'll notice that the report I'm presenting is referencing February till the end of the year. February, you received a report, and this one goes from that report forward.
Are you wanting to be up there?
No, not at all.
Okay.
So, the, the February data represents the first benchmark as we measure with NWEA. The end-of-year data represents the same assessment, but the numbers represent students that took the test both times. So, don't try to add this up and come up with our student count, it won't work because not all kiddos are represented here because some of you take the test due to attendance or a variety of reasons, and some were not even in district in February to take the test. But the celebrations, as you look at this, are that teachers were able to take kids from a point where they were measured in February, continue those kids along the path of growth, and then diminish that gap for those that were not at a level we expected, those that had not met their mid-year growth targets. So, as I look at all students, for example, in reading, we had 40% in February and 46%, we were able to increase by 6% the number of kids that reached their growth goals. So, if you continue to go right down that list, you're going to see there's some critical groups that have incredible amount of growth. So, that wasn't all students data that I gave you, but I wanted to give you three more that stood out to me. One is economically disadvantaged, and we measure that by free and reduced lunch rates. And if you look at for reading, it was an increase of 6% and an increase of 8% in math for the percent of students that reached their growth goals. For students that are African-American and they are self-reported, to be that, there was a 6% growth in reading and then a 12% growth in mathematics. So, we are seeing a lot of growth by not only our general population, but the subgroups within there. So, here's a couple of takeaways I have for you that aren't represented by the growth numbers. One, our demographics are changing in Penn Field. And if you look at the numbers that are presented to you, that's because those groups have reached a critical number that we're required to report. Not just you, but also to the state. When I first started, there were three groups, not including gender, and that was socioeconomic and then all students. And then we, of course, we had our gender reporting. The other subgroups had not reached critical mass at that time. Though that number has changed from 30 at one point to 10 within an organization, be it a building or a district. So, when we reach 10 in a subcategory, we do report it. But if you look at the subgroups that we have, it's increased, the number of groups that we not only track, but also that we report out to each other. The second thing is to find some way to help buildings with attendance. One of the things that I found as I was working with report targets for the end of the year is the amount of students that we have that will be designated as critically absent. I saw eight to 10 students that had over 70 days absent. So, that's, that's a goal area that will have to be addressed. These kids can't teach if they're not here in school, we can't take and do well on tests if they're not being taught. So, that was our other big area. I do have all the end numbers that I can send to you if you would like to represent what's the actual numbers within these subgroups. You can reach out to Mrs. Lemer and ask for that, I'd be happy to share that with her and with you. But it was pretty amazing to see the amount of growth that took place within our classrooms. Questions for me with more specifics or questions on the report itself?
Well, I, I kind of wish this slide was up on the board, Jerry. A little bit, just because I think it'd be nice if people at home could see it, but honestly, I understand your joy over the growth, but when our, when our ending numbers are in the 30% category, I mean, I don't, I think it's something to cry over. I mean, these numbers are hideous.
Well, let's define hideous before we start doing that.
Well, as I would define it, I mean, when we see 33% of a group. I mean, it's, I think it's awful.
So, these kids could be at a 75% and they're not, have reached achievement level, we're only talking about growth. So, the growth goals are established at the beginning of the year. I don't disagree with you that there's a lot of room left to be there, but this is, we're only required to report growth, that's the purpose of this report, but we do have the ability to report proficiency also.
I would hope we could do a lot better. It's sad.
Mr. Wood, you had talked to me earlier about the gap that was identified by the state, and you had asked the question while we were reading, Kate, about the, did that gap diminish? Yes, did it diminish all the way? No. And they didn't expect it to happen in one semester, they expected it to be a year and a half. And that was not NWEA, that was the state of Michigan's expectation.
Any additional questions? All right, thanks, Jerry.
Thank you very much, Jerry.
All right, moving on to items to be approved, we have 7.01, Approval of the Employee's Retirement, do I have a motion?
So, move?
I make motion.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion passes, 5-0. 7.02, Approval of MHSAA 2022-23 Membership Resolution, do I have a motion?
I make motion to approve the MHSAA membership resolution.
Support.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion passes, 5 to 0. 7.03, Approved King Scott Invoice Number 0016009.
So moved? Support.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, 5 to 0. 7.04, Approved King Scott Invoice 0016011.
So moved? Support.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, 5-0. 7.05, Approval of First Reading of Policy 1616, New Staff Dress and Grooming Updates from Neola.
I make motion to approve the first reading of Policy 1616.
Support.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, 5-0. 7.06, Approval of First Reading of Policy 7540.02, Web Accessibility Content APPS and Service Updates from Neola.
I make motion to approve the first reading of Policy 7540.2.
Support.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, 5-0. Approval of the first reading of Policy 5511, Dress Code and Grooming Updates from Neola.
I make motion to approve the first reading of Policy 5511.
Support.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, 5-0. Moving on to 8.01, Board Member Comments.
I just wanted to say thanks again to all of the retirees tonight, and all the service that they've put in, years and time dedication, and I wish them all well.
Agreed. Any additional board comments?
There's one more, there was an error and we did not recognize Sue Oswald for retiring as well. So, thank you, Sue, for your years of service as well, we appreciate that. And if you're watching, sorry that we missed you.
Any additional comments? All right, at 7:43, I adjourn this meeting. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Dana.